She is in awe. She's something. She don't care nothing about anyone being part of drama. She tries to stay away from all that.
You been all good?
It was good.
Pretty, pretty good, pretty good. How about you?
Good morning. I would like to welcome this full house to the Board of Trustees meeting of the Alabama Community College System. I want to welcome you all and I want to thank the Chancellor and his staff at the System Office, our Presidents and their staff members for helping put together today's agenda. There was a lot of work that went into it and I just want you all to know how grateful I am for your support. We're here at the Alabama Community College System where we remain laser focused on adult education, workforce development, and making life better. I would now like to call to the podium to give our invocation Pastor Todd Russell. Following Pastor Russell's invocation, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Vice Chairman Jeff Schell. Pastor Russell has served as pastor at Mountain Hill Baptist Church for eight years. He received his Master of Divinity degree from New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary. Pastor Russell was born in Montgomery and he has resided in Pike Road for over 25 years. Prior to receiving his masters, Pastor Russell received a Juris Doctorate from Mississippi College School of Law. Russell is a retiree from the state of Alabama where he most recently served as the Director of the Legal Division of the Administrative Office of Courts. He served as Senior Associate Counsel of the Alabama Community College System, General Counsel at the Alabama Department of Senior Services, and Associate Counsel and Legislative Liaison at the Alabama Department of Insurance. Russell currently works as a Legislative Liaison for AlCap. He is married to Ruth Elizabeth White and they have three adult children. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Presidents, retiring Presidents, Presidents-to-be today, other staff and the staff retiring. A great day to be with you here today and I want to thank you all for all you do for education here in the state of Alabama. My mother is a retired teacher, taught her entire career here in Montgomery. My wife, Betsy, teaches at Lamp here in Montgomery as well. And I'm thankful to be here today, really, on behalf of the greatest teacher of all, Jesus Christ. Would you bow your heads with me at this time? Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for waking us up this morning. Father, I, I thank you, Lord, for this group here today. Lord, I, I thank you, Lord, that they have as their mission educating, Lord, taking young minds, Lord, and teaching them of ways they can move forward, Lord, through this world. Father, it's my prayer, Lord, that any within my sound of my voice, Lord, that is here today, Lord, that they would grow closer to each other as they have their time in education, Lord, and they would grow closer to you. Father, I just pray, Lord, your blessings on each person here today. I pray you would bless them, that you would keep them, and yes, Lord, that you would make your face shine upon them. Father, it's my prayer, Lord, that they would seek your wisdom, Lord, in all the decisions that they have to make on a daily basis, that those decisions would not be just their own, Lord, but their own, Lord, in light of their relationship with you. For these and all things, I pray in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our only Lord and Savior. Amen.
Y'all please stand for the pledge. Praise, salute. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call. Mr. Jeff Schell.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell. Mr. John Mitchell. Ms. Valerie Wright.
Present.
Mr. Goodrich Rogers.
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston. Mr. Ron Houston. Mr. Levell Brown.
Present.
Mr. Tim McCartney.
Present.
Mr. Rittenweizey.
Present.
Dr. Givett Richardson.
Present.
Governor Tagg Ivey. We have a quorum. Okay, next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we amend today's agenda to, to item 8A1, a resolution.
Okay, we, we have a request to amend the agenda, a motion to amend the agenda to add item 8A1, a resolution from the ACCS. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
There he is. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July the 9th meeting. Those were distributed to you guys. Do I have a motion?
Some.
I have a motion for Mr. Rogers to have a second, for Mr. McCartney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, we have anybody signed up for a public comment? Okay, we will move on now to one of my favorite parts, the college spotlight. And today we are going to be spotlighting and highlighting Chattahoochee Valley Community College. Dr. Screws.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chancellor Baker, Chairman Gray, Members of the Board of Trustees. I have the privilege of bringing the college spotlight on behalf of Chattahoochee Valley Community College. There are a number of things that I could share with you today to serve as examples of the great work that's going on at Chattahoochee Valley Community College. I could tell you about our phenomenal health sciences programs, which graduate numbers of students whose certification pass rates exceed consistently the state and national averages. I could tell you about the new career training and workforce programs in electrical technology and truck driving that will begin this fall. I could tell you about the great community partnerships like the one established with East Alabama Medical Center in Auburn to train needed practical nurses, and the one about Able Ministries in Seal, Alabama, to provide adult education to all of their clients. I could tell you about the newly renovated welding lab that trains welders for our region. I could tell you about the Rural Community Colleges grant that the college has received that will help us to reach students throughout our college's footprint. I could go on and on, but since I only have 10 minutes, we have decided to share a story of excellence about one of our athletic teams, the Lady Pirates basketball team. By our estimation, this is a modern-day Cinderella story, one of determination, grit, and excellence. Despite beginning the season with 12 players and finishing with just seven players, due to injuries and unforeseen circumstances, the team remained focused and resilient. Small in number, but mighty in heart, these women showed the state, the region, and the nation what pirate strong truly means. They enjoyed a conference record of 12 and 0, an overall record of 22 and 8. They ranked first in conference. They are the Alabama Community College Conference Division II State Champions and they have the trophy to show for that. And they vied for, they also won the Gulf South District Championship, and they vied for the national championship for the first time in the college's 30-year history. I want to say that again, for the first time in 30 years. At CVCC, we operate under the mantra that our students are students first and athletes second, and this team did not disappoint. Seven players were named to the Fall Commissioners Honor Roll. Six players earned spots on the Spring Commissioners Honor Roll. Two players were named to the NJCAA All Academic Third Team. And six of the team members have signed to four-year institutions while two are remaining at CVCC to continue their academic and athletic journey. Zai Thompson will be transferring to the University of Tennessee Martin. Aliyah Younger, Tuskegee University. Gabby Pass, Miles College. Nialy Lee, Point University. Camaria Reed, Stillman College. And Summer Hicks will be attending the University of West Alabama. There are also a number of individual accolades that I could share with you about this Cinderella team, but in the essence of time, I will just go to the video so that you can see the highlights of what pirate strong truly means. Play the video.
A modern-day Cinderella isn't rescued by a prince. She builds her own cast.
It starts with our toughness, built valley tough, and that's not, and that's not by chance. We, we really want that on your mind when you come here. Our girls are gonna be tough. We've gotten up at 6 o'clock every morning. We get up at 6 and, and we have our workout, and it's just because we want to be just tougher than everybody. We want to wake up and say, there's nobody gonna outwork us. You might have more talent than us, but you ain't gonna outwork us. And, and as you know, in life and, and, and sports and everything else, the person that works the hardest usually wins. That's what we're trying to build here, that nobody will outwork us. I don't care what your record is, I don't care what you came in with for as accolades, we could care less. When we step out on that floor, it's pedal to the metal.
They didn't wait to be chosen. They worked for every moment, every rebound, every grade, every opportunity. Their story proves what we've always known at CVCC. Success isn't handed to you, you earn it.
This got well, a quick move. Basket's good, I don't even know how she did that off the mark. Rebound, summer power, what a rebound and a putback. Quick move right here. Woo, look at that scoop. Oh yeah, we excited to have you. Look at that pass. Basket's good. Here's Johnson. Bam! Sharp shooter.
Chattahoochee Valley making their first appearance in 30 years.
And 11% for three. Speaking of threes, here's a three that is laced.
But we have seen some unfortunate errors.
Lee, got it!
Four, can't quite get it to go to Noko, and here comes Chattahoochee Valley with pass. Pass all the way to the 10 and gets it to go, a coast-to-coast lay-in.
Find a way to stem the bleeding and cheese is your best candidate.
Carter ransom dials up a three. Inside to get it. Gets it done.
Okay, and now I want to, thank you. Now I want to recognize two of the girls who were able to be here with us today, Cameron DeCosta, ladies would you please stand, and Jada Landers. Thank you all. I also want to recognize some very important individuals who are here today with us from our athletic department. Our head coach, head Lady Pirates coach, Jonathan Richardson, would you stand up? Coach Joe. Coach Joe was also recognized as the ACCC Division II Women's Basketball Coach of the Year. Our assistant coaches for the Lady Pirates are Latonya Jackson and John Steele. Would you all please stand? Y'all, these, these individuals did an amazing job with that group of seven girls and took them all the way to the national championship, and that is something that we will forever be grateful for, the hard work and dedication that you poured into this team. I would be remiss in my duties if I did not also recognize our Athletic Director, Ms. Ashley Landy. Ashley, would you please stand? Ashley has also been recognized as Athletic Director of the Year. As you can see, when it comes to athletics, we are a force to be reckoned with. Thank you. In closing, I want to reiterate that this season was more than just wins for us. It was a testament of teamwork, academic excellence, and unmatched resilience. Congratulations to the Lady Pirates, our coaching staff, and to the entire athletic division at Chattahoochee Valley Community College. We are truly pirate strong. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Screws. Congratulations, ladies, team. Very proud of you guys, represent us well. Okay, next on our agenda is item 8 for Executive Legal and Public Information, 8A1. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. David O'Brien and Levellin Ryan.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think the next individual to, to speak this morning is Dr. Tammy Briggs.
Oh, Dr. Tammy Briggs.
Good morning and greetings to all, to the Board of Trustees and to Chancellor Baker. We want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to acknowledge Dr. Mitchell's contribution to this great work that we do at the Alabama Community College System. If you will give me just a few moments, I want to give you a brief narrative about Dr. James Mitchell, the man, the myth, and the legend. For the man, it has always been about the student. He has consistently remained focused on this one thing, what can we do to help the students? His commitment to providing something new and capturing young minds early and exposing them often to post-secondary environments was evidenced when he started Alabama's first early college program in 2004. To date, because of his efforts, the college has served over 5,400 dual enrollment students. He's also committed to innovation and providing access to non-traditional students. And because of his leadership, the college was able to offer LPN dual enrollment to high school students in 2011. And for those non-traditional students who could not quit their jobs and just focus on their education, he offered LPN night programs, online mobility RN programs, and in 2004 and in 2004, the college launched its online learning program. And to date, we have served over 17,000 online students from more than 25 different states. Now let's talk a little bit about the myth. Everybody who knows Dr. Mitchell, they know this. He is super serious about results, and he is committed to excellence. And sometimes his stoic demeanor might give some the impression that he don't like to talk, or they got a small heart. But I want to say this, ladies and gentlemen, that can be further from the truth. I myself have personally witnessed the generosity of his big heart. I remember a time when the executive team was at a small restaurant in downtown Selma, and the waitress who was serving us happened to mention to Dr. Mitchell that she wanted to go back to school, but she just didn't have the funds to do so. Well, I later learned that Dr. Mitchell contacted that student, and he not only paid for her first semester, but he paid for her entire associate degree, might add, out of his own personal funds. We have countless stories of how he has paid bills for students, how he has fixed cars, put transmissions in cars so that students could stay in school. Now that, I say, debunks that myth, that he got a small heart and he don't want to talk to people. He'll talk to you. You just need to be talking about something he's passionate about. Now in closing, the legend. In order to understand why we would class him as a legend, we got to go back to the beginning. When Dr. Mitchell acquired WCCS, the college was failing on so many fronts. We were failing financially. We were negative $630,000 in the red. We had failing facilities. He inherited a campus where most of the buildings had leakery roots and probably hadn't seen new construction, construction in almost two decades. He often says, when he saw this, he thought to himself, how the heck is a student supposed to learn with water dripping on their head? And I might add, I cleaned that up a little bit. We were failing on so many fronts. Enrollment was declining, morale for faculty and staff was low, and the community didn't have any confidence in the college's ability to make a difference in anything. Well, Dr. Mitchell took on that challenge. In his 25-year tenure, he gave the college a complete facelift. He transformed the campus culture to not just being student-friendly, but we have a student-first culture. He completely shifted the community's perspective of the college. Now about those failing financials, to date, all of the college's negative statements, financial statements, have been completely eradicated. The college has no long-term indebtedness. About those failing facilities, all existing buildings have been renovated. The college has built three new multi, um, multi-complex buildings, and we acquired two new off-site campuses in West Alabama. And all of these buildings and the expansion projects were, are paid for in full upon completion. The enrollment, we've experienced a 32% increase in enrollment, and to date, under Dr. Mitchell's tenure, 34,000 students have been served at Wallace Community College, and more than 7,200 certificates and degrees have been awarded. One of Dr. Mitchell's favorite quotes comes from Frederick Douglass, and he often says this, and we've heard him say it multiple times, "Measure me not from the heights I have risen, but from the depths from which I have climbed." Ladies and gentlemen, based on where the college was when Dr. Mitchell got it and where it is now, I would say, for all intents and purposes, that he is a legend. He has left an indelible mark on the community of Selma and the counties in West Alabama. And I surmise that the legend has left a legacy that will live on and continue to impact lives, continue to help lift so many more out of cycles of generational poverty. And for that, Dr. Mitchell, we want to say thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your sacrifice. Now, as if I hadn't said enough, we're gonna play a short video to say a little bit more about our president. Thank you.
When I first met Dr. Mitchell, I was struck because he always looked me right in the eyes, right in the face.
When I first met him, he was kind, but very professional and very serious.
Dr. Mitchell's a really good guy. He cares about the education. He cares about the programs that he's implemented here.
A lot of people can take something that's in existence and, and keep it going, but it takes a person of vision to be able to see it when it's not in existence, and then to be able to help bring it into existence. He understands community in community college. A lot of colleges are in community, in the community, but they are not connected to the community. If any student wanted to go to Wallace Community College, whether they had resources or not, he'd find a way for them to go.
He will offer any class. If you come to him with a need for that trade, he's installing it in this campus. Because the college is so important to us and a key asset, it's also very important to have strong leadership like Dr. Mitchell. I'll never forget, we was in Demopilis opening up another trade school over there, and one of the county commissioners said, um, this thing's failed two or three times. He said, I don't know what we're doing here. And it was the school chancellor, Dr. Mitchell, some senators, and we were walking down the hall, and I'll never forget it. I said, you ain't met James Mitchell yet.
When he walked into the rooms, he looked into the ceilings and examined the roof, the windows. I had no idea at that time that he was getting a really close look at what needed to be done, because he completely transformed this campus. And when he told us that he was gonna do something, he did it. There has not been anything that we needed to improve our programs that he has not made sure that we obtained. As a result of his commitment to ensure that we were able to give the best education possible right here at Wallace Community College in Selma.
Outstanding administrator, a visionary, and a person of courage. And they all came together in him, and they've made a powerful difference here at Wallace Community College and in Selma and across the Black Trail.
Wow. Madam Chair, members of the board, Chancellor Baker, you know, it was tough sitting there watching that, because it really reminded me why I have all this gray hair, because I remember from whence we came 25 years ago. But it's been a beautiful journey. You know, with all of the hard work, with all of the problems, you know, the great days outnumbered the bad days, because the bottom line was, we were often the only beacon of hope that students in West Alabama had, and we had to be there for them to ensure that that beacon of hope became a reality, and that they could live their dream. Because you know what? I got an opportunity to live my dream. When you all selected me as president of Wallace Community College in Selma, you gave me the opportunity. I was, that was a dream of mine. That's something I wanted to do. And thinking about it, I said, oh, I'll never be that. And guess what? You all saw something. And Chancellor, I want you to know as well, you have been a great support for me and Wallace Community College over the years, probably helped sustain my tenure here, because at one point, as you and I've had conversations about, I was seriously saying, hey, maybe it's time for me to go. But I'm so glad that I had your support and the support of the, the board that I continue. Mr. Roan, I wanted to also thank you for your support and encouragement over the years, and, you know, I hope that you saw in West Alabama that we truly did make a difference. But I think it's important to just say overall, I've got, had a chance to be president of Wallace Community College for 25 years, and that's the greatest job I've ever had in my life, and I want to thank you all for that opportunity. So Chancellor, I can go home tonight. I also want to recognize my wife. Because I want to be able to get in. But I have to truly say, she's been with me on this 25-year journey and longer, and she's been there through the great times and the bad times, and I often refer to her because she truly is the wind beneath my wings. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. We're not quite finished with you yet. Board members, you have a resolution in front of you, and I would like to call upon Mr. O'Brien to read the resolution for our consideration.
I would be delighted to. Whereas, Dr. James Mitchell has served with distinction as president of George Corley Wallace State Community College for 25 years, demonstrating unwavering commitment to student success, academic excellence, and community engagement. And whereas, under Dr. Mitchell's visionary leadership, Wallace State has experienced significant growth in enrollment, program offerings, campus infrastructure, and workforce development initiatives. And whereas, Dr. Mitchell has been a tireless advocate for access to higher education, equity, and innovation, leaving a lasting legacy that will continue to benefit students, faculty, staff, and broader community for generations to come. And whereas, Dr. Mitchell was the pioneer of the early college enrollment initiative at Wallace State, which was the early precursor to what is now the Alabama Dual Enrollment Program, which has resulted in hundreds of thousands of students receiving college credit, certificates, and associate degrees while in high school. And whereas, in his leadership, his leadership has fostered a culture of integrity, collaboration, and excellence, and his mentorship has inspired countless educators and administrators across the state. And whereas, the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees wishes to recognize and honor Dr. Mitchell's extraordinary contributions upon his upcoming retirement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees formally expresses its deepest appreciation to Dr. Mitchell for his outstanding service and leadership, and be it further resolved that the Student Center at George Corley Wallace State Community College shall henceforth be named the Dr. James M. Mitchell Student Center, in recognition of his enduring impact on the college and the Alabama Community College system.
Let's see if I can get through this. Um, we have a resolution that has been presented to the board. Do I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Roan and a second from Mr. McCartney. Do we have any items for discussion? Any comments?
I have a comment. You don't know the lives that you impact, even those that don't attend Wallace State. And just very selfishly, my daughter completed several dual enrollment classes this summer and became EKG certified. She is 17 years old, and she's already been offered a job. So that is with which of you.
Hearing no further items of discussion, do you, um, wow, roll call vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Houston, the resolution passes as stands. Let's see, let me make sure. Do you have any further comments, Dr. Mitchell?
I'm overwhelmed.
You're overwhelmed. So are we. Chancellor, any comments from you?
Well, you know, when I was trying to learn this business, because I've had very limited exposure over the years, James Mitchell was always someone that I could call and discuss the issues with. His experience has been invaluable to any success that I've had, because I could always trust him, and he'd tell me the truth. And that, that was so important early in the years. But then I also remember the first time I was invited to go over to his campus and speak at graduation. I drove up to the campus, and I had been there before, back in the days when I was Assistant State Superintendent. And I couldn't believe where I was, because the campus appearance was so different. And I thought to myself, as I walked through that campus and went into the meeting, somebody here really cares, and that makes a difference. James losing you is serious to me. But I wish you the best, and you better not be a stranger.
I agree. Okay, we now are gonna move on to item 9A1, which is Basic Instruction, Research, and Development, Adult Education Facilities, Fiscal Information Technology, and Workforce Development. Item 9A1, Southern Union State Community College, an increase in their residence hall fee. It is recommended that the ACCS authorize Southern Union State Community College to increase the rental fee for the college's residence hall. This fee increase will take place fall semester of 2025. This is anticipated to bring $86,000 in additional auxiliary revenue annually. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Okay, item 9A2, and we're gonna roll through these pretty quickly. Wallace State Community College, an implementation of a course fee. Wallace Community, it is recommended that the Alabama Community College System authorize Wallace State Community College henceforth to implement a $25 course fee to CIS 149, Digital Literacy. This course fee would be effective fall semester 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 9A3. We are moving to equipment purchase. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the Chancellor of ACCS to expand approximately $1.2 million to purchase six heavy equipment training simulators with software, three trailers, and various other support services and peripheral equipment to support the Innovation Center's Dunn University Training Initiative. The fiscal consideration for this, as I stated, is 1.2 million. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Rogers, a second from Mr. McCartney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Moving on to Jefferson State Community College. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Jefferson State Community College to increase the college's credit hour fee for textbooks through Barnes &amp; Noble, the First Day Complete Program, from $24 per credit hour to $25 per credit hour. This increase will take effect spring semester of 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Roan. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on to item 9A5, Enterprise State Community College. It is recommended that the ACCS Board authorize Enterprise State Community College to increase the college's credit hour fee for textbooks through the BBA All-in Program from $25 per credit hour to $26 per credit hour. This increase will take effect fall semester 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Item 9A6, we are moving over to Bishop State Community College. It is recommended that the ACCS Board authorize Bishop State Community College to proceed with their project name Main Campus Purchase of the York Property. The closing shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Expected milestones for this project are as followed. Due diligence from June to July with a closing date September of 2025. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Shell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. McCartney. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Item 9A7, we're moving over to Coastal. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with the project name Addition of Aviation Training Hangar at the Brookley Field Campus. Construction contract shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. There are expected milestones with a bid date of July the 31st, construction start date the third quarter of 2025, substantial completion date by the third quarter of 2026 with a final completion date of the fourth quarter of 2026. Do I have a motion?
Aye.
I have a motion from Mr. Shell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Roan. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. We're going to stay at Coastal Alabama, and it is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with the project name Fairhope Campus Bell Museum Renovation. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. We have a bid date of July of 2025. Construction start third quarter of '25 with a final completion date of the second quarter of 2026. Do I have a motion? I have a motion for Mr. Shell. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
We are going to move over west to Shelton State Community College to the Fred Campus. Oh, Lawson. I checked off one too quick, sorry. Lawson State Community College, the Birmingham Campus Tennis Courts refurbishment. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Lawson State Community College to proceed with the project name Birmingham Campus Tennis Courts Refurbishment. Phase one is demolition and early release electrical equipment purchase package. The construction contract shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Roan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Now we are moving back to Shelton State to the Fred Campus. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees authorize Shelton State to proceed with the project name Fred Campus Building Renovations: The AV Installation Bid Package. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. We are looking at an AV installation date of install of July the 31st. Construction began last year with a final completion date for this total project of the first quarter of 2026. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Roan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
All right, item 9A11, Jasper Campus HVAC Training Center for Bevel State. It is recommended that the ACCS Board of Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to proceed with the project name Jasper Campus HVAC Training Center Addition for Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center: The Footing in the Foundation Metal Building Bid Package. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than December the 1st of 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Roan. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Item 9A12, Bevel State Community College, the Jasper Industrial Parkway Campus Statutory Warranty Deed. It is recommended that the ACCS authorize Bevel State to proceed with the project name Jasper Campus HVAC... Is that right? 12. Warranty deed or... Sorry. I have the HVAC.
I think it was in there twice.
I think it's in there twice. Yeah. Do you have the same one? Okay. In my package, I'm sorry, my apologies. I'm missing the action item for the HVAC. I mean, for the warranty deed for the Jasper Industrial Parkway Campus. Do you have an electronic copy that I can read? My apologies. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bevel State to proceed with the project name Jasper Campus Statutory Warranty Deed of Gift to Walker County Board of Education. The closing shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Our due diligence period is currently ongoing with a closing date anticipated of August 2025. There are no fiscal considerations for this. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Lay that right there. Okay. Item 9A13, Calhoun Community College. Make sure mine's in order with...
Yep.
Okay, all right. Calhoun Community College. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Calhoun Community College to proceed with the project name Decatur Campus Purchase of 219 Second Avenue Southeast property. This closing shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Shell. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay, moving now to item 9A14, Jefferson State Community College. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Jefferson State Community College to proceed with the project name Jefferson Campus Purchase of 4550 Pinson Valley Parkway property for CDL Truck Driving Program. The closing shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Shell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Lightsey. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
We are almost through this. Item 9A15, Northeast Alabama Community College. Excuse me. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Northeast Alabama Community College to proceed with the project name Classroom Technology Upgrades. The construction contracts shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Shell. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say a couple of words, please. Just like Dr. James Mitchell, Patricia Falk is who wrote this grant and she gave to this college. She was the IT coordinator. Patricia passed away in 2024 after about a five-year battle with a very rare cancer, LMS. She never quit. She wrote the grant, among many other things, while she was struggling and being treated. And she sought out and had the best possible treatment at MD Anderson Hospital. She was a dedicated person, very dedicated person to Northeast Alabama Community College, and she would not quit even when she had to use a walker to get to work. She loved her college and her coworkers and was respected and loved by them. And this grant is a testimony to her dedication and devotion. Patricia is still having a positive impact and making life better even after her passing. So wanted to let that be known for the background on this grant. Just like Dr. Mitchell, and like many of you do, you give and give and give. That's a great testimony.
Absolutely. It's an honor to sit up here and recognize those who work so tirelessly for us. After that discussion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Okay, our final item, 9A16. We are moving to Wallace Community College to Selma. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Wallace Community College Selma to produce... To proceed with the project name Career Tech Education Modular Trainer Teaching Equipment. The contract shall be executed no later than November the 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Mr. Roan. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. McCartney. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Yes.
I may be confused, but I think we only got one of two that were on our agenda for Bevel State. That's two HVACs. I'm right away on the number one.
Okay.
Am I sure which one?
Let's go back. I believe that was item 13. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
I thought we did them both.
Did we do both? I think we did. We did the warranty deed, we didn't one HVAC, but I...
Was there not?
There's three.
Two HVAC.
Two HVACs. And one for warranty.
I missed the other HVAC.
Yeah, I missed the other HVAC, too. My apologies.
I only have one.
We missed one.
Number 11?
We did 11.
We did 11.
We missed 12.
Was there two?
Yeah, there's two. There's not two on the agenda. There's two in our back.
Okay.
Two HVACs and then one warranty.
Mr. O'Brien, I'll defer to you.
Both of the items for Bevel State were voted on and approved by the board.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Dr. Mitchell, this board meeting will go down as I need to slow my roll a little bit. Okay. We will move now on to item 10 Personnel. Do we have any personnel?
Yes. I'd like to call Chris Cox to the podium.
Good morning. We get to celebrate even more today. Congratulations, Dr. Mitchell, and your family. But also, board members, Chancellor Baker, today we're going to just speak about a retirement that actually works in one of my divisions, and that's in the Instructional Division. And it's a name that's well-known and recognized in this room and amongst our 12,000 employees, maybe one of the more well-known names in the state for community college system, and that is Trish Jones. Talking to Trish, Trish is retiring at the end of this month, and her first job in our system started in 1985. And I'm going to tell a little story, and I hit a book in here. But about three or four years ago, I went to Trish and I said, Trish, I need to know something about a college. And she said, well, give me just a minute. And she came back, this is not the actual notebook, but it looked just like this. And it was hand-typed profiles on every college in the state that she had done at some point. And it was almost just like this, which was impressive when you looked through. But I actually have her hand-typed resume that was turned in in 1988. But, you know, it's always hard when you're trying to prepare, and you just think of all the great people that work in our system and that we work with. And I think our division's just a family environment. But it was easy to come up with some things to say about Trish. I'm currently reading a book, and it's called Leading from the Middle by Scott Maltz. And it's a really good read. But one of the things that it talks about in that book is is the influences up, down, and across an organization. And as I was thinking about speaking on Trish, I think she exemplifies that, up, down, and across the organization, from the chancellor down to anybody in our organization and across to the students. Because one of the things she's participated in for so long is celebrating all Alabama students and planning that to celebrate students around the state that have achieved at a very high level. So I asked some friends of Trish just things that come to mind when you think of Trish, and a few words that came up was friend, confidant, loyal, fun, and loves to celebrate. So I think anybody that knows Trish knows that that does exemplify her personality. And as we're proud for Trish and her next step in life to retirement, we will also miss Trish in her absence here, and it'll be a tough job to replace. At this time, I am going to ask Trish if she wants to say a couple of words. Thank you.
Good morning, Chancellor, trustees. Never in my life, when I started here in 1985, would I imagine myself standing here talking about my retirement. But in 19 days, 152 hours, a little less than 26,000 minutes, and a little less than 1.6 million seconds, I will be retiring. I don't have any big plans. I have a family member who's going to be going through some health issues, so that is where my priority will be. There's so many memories, and as I've been thinking about what I would say here today, that come flooding back. I began my career at Wallace Selma as a receptionist, and I'm a proud graduate of Wallace Selma. And Dr. Charles Byrd was president at that time. And he told me the day that I left there, coming to work here, he said, "Eloise," that's what he called me, "you better do us proud." And I hope I kept my word for that. There's so many friends and mentors in this room and in this system. And now that I'm just going to be a bystander, bystander, I will still be the biggest fan and the loudest cheerleader for this system. And I expect great things coming out. So thank you for all the opportunities you've given me, Chancellor, and this does not get you off the hook from sending me books.
Any other items of the personnel?
Yes, yes, there is. With the retirement, I'm just going to call you James. Is that okay? James, it brings another process in place. We've gone through a process, we've advertised, solicited applications, and gone through interviews. And I would like David, if you will, read a bio of the person that we have chosen to recommend assume the role as president at Wallace Community College in Selma.
I will be delighted to, sir. Dr. Denita Griffin is a seasoned higher education leader with over 25 years' experience in the Alabama Community College system. She has held multiple leadership roles at Wallace Community College Selma, including executive assistant to the president, dean of students, and interim vice president for instruction. Dr. Griffin is recognized for her expertise in strategic planning, budget management, academic program development, and fostering partnerships with business and industry to advance workforce readiness. A passionate advocate for student success, she is committed to improving institutional performance and expanding opportunities for learners. Dr. Griffin holds a doctorate in higher education leadership from Walden University, a master's degree in counseling and human development from Troy University, a bachelor's degree in social work from the University of Alabama, and she is a proud graduate of Wallace Community College Selma. She is married to Calvin Griffin, Sr., and they have three children, Calvin Jr., Cameron, and Ashley.
Madam Chairman, I recommend that Dr. Griffin be appointed new president at Wallace Community College immediately upon the retirement of James Mitchell.
Yes, sir. Board members, you hear the recommendation from the chancellor to appoint Dr. Griffin as our new president of Wallace State Community College Selma? Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Roan. Do I have a second?
So.
I have a second from Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Aye.
Congratulations, Dr. Griffin.
Dr. Mitchell, ain't it now? I'm overwhelmed. Thank you all. First, to God be the glory for the things that he has done, the things that he is doing, and the things that he's going to do. Thank you, Chancellor, for this opportunity. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for your vote of confidence. I know firsthand the transformative power of community colleges, so many people in my family know as well. I thank you for the opportunity to serve Selma, Domopolis, and the West Alabama's residents. Dr. Mitchell, thank you for pushing me beyond what I could have ever imagined or ever could have believed for myself. Your legacy will forever live, and there are big shoes to fill, but I've had the opportunity to walk beside you for 25 years, and I've learned so much. And I promise you that I will continue to move the college forward. We will be better, we will be greater. I want to acknowledge my husband and my children. Will you please stand? I have one son who could not be here because of football at Jacksonville State University, but I want to ask my mother-in-law and my siblings to please stand. I am the, I am the last of eight children and the 52nd of 53, 52 grandchildren. And so I thought about that last night, and I thought, oh, I almost didn't make it here. Chancellor, during our first meeting, you said your vision was to improve the quality of life for all Alabama citizens. And it is my goal to improve the quality of life for all that I can, by all means that I can, everywhere I can, for as long as I can. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Any, any further personnel?
I think that's, that's a big move.
This is a big, 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 big day already. Next on our agenda is the chancellor's report. We're going to keep you busy.
Okay. I'm going to keep other folks busy. Neil, Neil Scott.
Good morning, board members. Good morning, presidents and guests. And before I get started with the enrollment update, I just want to, just want to say a very, very brief word. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for your tireless work and, and the, the hands that that community and that college have been in, have been in very capable hands. And having worked so closely with Dr. Griffin over the last few years and getting to know her, I am really, really excited to see that that baton is being passed into, into capable hands as well, and she's going to do a fantastic job. So I look forward to giving you a very brief enrollment update today. But I do want to, I do want to give just a very quick review of the school year that we just finished. These are, these are the numbers for the, the three terms that we, that we just finished in this school year. In fall 2024, we had over 89,000 students who were enrolled in four credit programs. That was a 7% increase over that same, same term last school year. Credit hour production, we saw an almost 5% increase, and 21 of our 24 colleges saw increased headcount over fall '23. Spring '25, we had over 84,000 students enrolled in four credit classes. That was a 7.8% increase over spring '24. And 22 of our colleges saw increases in headcount. Credit hour production was, was a 6.7% increase over spring '24. And then summer term, the term that we just finished, we had over 53,000 students, a nearly 10% increase over summer 2024. Credit hour production was also a 10% increase over summer 2024. And 23 of the, or 22 of the 23 colleges that offer summer courses increased headcount over, over last year. These are, these are big numbers, but what it all wraps up to is a total unduplicated headcount for the '24-'25 school year was over 131,000 students. That's 8,700 more students than we saw in the previous school year, and 22 of our colleges saw an increased unduplicated headcount. Credit hour production for the 2024-2025 school year totaled over 1.8 million credit hours. That was over 110,000, over 112,000 more credit hours produced than last year. That was a 6.6% increase over the credit hours that we produced last year. And all of our colleges increased credit hour production over '23-'24. 2024-2025 was our largest headcount that we have seen since the 2011-2012 school year. Just an absolutely huge enrollment year for ACCS and something that our presidents and their faculty and their staff should be extremely proud of. Board, this is something you should be extremely proud of, too. Your, your tireless efforts and your support contributed to this in a, in a major way. We always have to turn our attention to the next term, though. I know you presidents tell your, your teams all the time, "Look, let's celebrate for about three minutes, and then let's get back to work," right? And that's what our colleges have done. So as of yesterday, ACCS colleges have enrolled 85,793 students for, in four credit courses for this fall. We still have, we still have several days to go before this, before student, before classes begin, and we even have a second mini-term that will begin late September, early October. So we have a few months before we'll be able to finally capture this number. But right now, year over year, we have 11.8% more students registered in four credit courses than we did on the state last year. That's, that's over 9,000 more students, and 20 of our colleges are showing a, a headcount increase for fall. Those same students are enrolled in 779,107 credit hours, an almost 11% increase year over year from, from where we were fall '24. And that's over 76,000 more credit hours that, that we're anticipating right now. 20 of our colleges are showing an increase in fall credit hour production. This is great news. We have, we have now seen a, we've now seen a headcount increase. I believe this would be our fifth year in a row if this holds, and we anticipate that it, that it will. We will see a little bit of a dip probably in that, in that percentage as colleges drop students for, for various reasons, or students who may not show up to class. But I, I know, I know I can speak for our colleges when I can say that they are laser-focused on those students and making sure that that, that, that they're taking good care of those students and getting them to take those next steps. So are there any questions about our enrollment? Thank you. It's always a pleasure to deliver these good numbers, and thank you again for your support.
Neil. Your comment, thank you again for your support to the board. I, I want the board to recognize this, and I hope the public recognizes this. A lot of this work takes up a, a major portion of all of our time. All of you spent untold hours working and promoting and soliciting support from across every community. But the stability of this board and the willingness of this board to function in a way that is totally supportive of what you as employees of the system is doing is probably much bigger than you ever realize. And I appreciate that, and I know I speak for every employee of this system. We appreciate the commitment that you have to make this system the change agent that it can be and is already there, that brings about an opportunity for so many people to make their lives better. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you. Susan. This is kind of my right hand now. And I've asked her to give us a report on some things.
Can we start the video?
But let me just say this. One of the great things I like about what we're doing is the fact that we can offer this to you free. The app doesn't cost a dime. All of the streams, it's all free, thanks to these amazing partners. And we've tried to handpick partners that we think it's a good fit, that I believe in. And I believe in the Alabama Community College System, ACCS. What they've done for young people in this state, what they've done for the state in general, it's amazing. And for just a moment, I want you to hear from ACS and their leadership team.
Good morning. I'm Jimmy Baker, chancellor of the Alabama Community College System. On behalf of the system, I would like to congratulate James Fan with his endeavor to initiate and launch the Alabama Weather Network. This will be a great service to the people of the state of Alabama. The Alabama Community College System will be a major supporter of the program. As James and his staff provide the weather information, the Alabama Community College System will provide information about the educational and workforce opportunities across the state. We at the Alabama Community College System are excited about this opportunity and believe it will be a great service to the entire state, and we wish the best of luck to all of you.
I absolutely love our partnership with the Alabama Community College System. I appreciate what they do. You'll be learning much more about them as we go along.
Work, a strong word. Together with force, it's something pretty powerful. Our workforce keeps Alabama growing. So where does it come from? Your Alabama Community Colleges. Quality classroom learning, hands-on, real job training, all across Alabama. Building enormous ships down south, blasting into space up north. And in between, all the jobs that move us forward. Alabama's Community Colleges, Alabama's largest training network.
Thank you. Good morning. So when the Alabama Weather Network launched on Monday, within the first 10 minutes, viewers saw these two very powerful videos and were thrilled to announce that the Alabama Community College System is a proud sponsor of this groundbreaking 24/7 statewide weather service led by Alabama's most trusted meteorologist, James Fan. Those who follow James, and let me just say here, I am a fangirl, know his deep love for Alabama and his role as an ambassador for good. Let me just say this, though, I would really appreciate fewer photos of spiders and snakes on his social media. But James and his team will deliver real-time weather updates that keep Alabamians informed and safe. And here's a fact. On launch day, the network became the most downloaded weather app in the country, surpassing even the Weather Channel. Through this partnership, ACCS will be featured on broadcast, digital platforms, and in community outreach. So colleges, I'm letting you know now, please get ready. James and his team plan to visit all 24 colleges to learn about and share stories of inspiration, success, perseverance, and service. Allow me to commend Clinton Bujua and Doyle Powell from our communications and marketing team for recognizing the value of partnering with a like-minded leader who shares our passion for serving Alabama. And I'll end by saying this, stay tuned, we will soon be sharing our amazing stories in much bigger, better, embolder fashion. And to you, Ms. Gray, we are working with James's schedule right now in hopes that we can come to a date where he can actually meet with us in person and meet with the board. But he wants you to know how much he appreciates the Alabama Community College System. And as a point of personal privilege, Dr. Mitchell, thank you for the incredible example that you have set in this system. Thank you all. Any questions? Thank you.
Do we have any committee reports? Okay. The date and location of our next meeting will be here. Our work session will be here. Our work session will be here. It says 10:20. We've blown that out of the water. So we will reconvene here. I'm sorry, I will defer to Mr. Ruh.
Just one, one, thanks. One note in closing. I didn't say anything during Dr. Mitchell's remarks, but I think this particular meeting has been about community and those who have served this system so well, as the chancellor said, both with Trish and Dr. Mitchell being very long-term employees of ACCS. But what you heard more, and I think is most important to me, is both of them focused on touching those people who are what we are here for, and that is the students. As a resident born and raised in the Black Belt, Dr. Mitchell and those folks at Wallace Community College, we say thank you. Thank you for those kids who will be going back to school in a few weeks that are in elementary school now. And at some point, hopefully, they will dual enroll and come on to Wallace or any of the other schools. But thank you for being a light of opportunity, a light of excellence. And Dr. Griffin, as you take that paton to run the next mile, we will all be in the stands applauding you and supporting you and Wallace and the other 23 schools as well. But just behalf of the residents, those who are in the Black Belt, we just particularly say thank you for a job well done. And I'm reminded as I close that there's this poem by Rudyard Kipling, "The Thousandth Man." And basically it says, "99, 999 you can't count on, but there's that one who will sink or swim with you." It's always a pleasure to sink or swim with you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruh. Our next board meeting will be September the 10th, right back here. I have 11:20. We will reconvene at 11:35. Clinton, I think we need some pictures and all that fun stuff. So we will, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion in a second. Aye. I will call to order the work session. And for those of you who chose to stay to see how bad I fumbled this one up, too bad, Mr. O'Brien's going to do all the heavy lifting for us today. So, Mr. O'Brien, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to take the first three items together. They are all mission statements. And actually, they are all the current mission statements for Enterprise State, Marion, and Shelton State. And each of the colleges is asking the board to review and approve those mission statements. Are there any questions about any of those? We'll move to the next item, which comes from Drake State. And this is the college's request that the board of trustees authorize the college to increase its special building fee from $15 to $20 per credit hour. The increased fee- The increased fee, if approved, would go into effect in the spring semester of 2026. The college estimates that additional annual revenue from the increase will be approximately $100,000 and will be used to pay down the college's bond debt. Are there any questions on that? The next item comes from Bishop State. It is a request that the Board of Trustees approve the college's application for an associate, an applied science degree in aviation manufacturing to be implemented in the spring semester of 2026. This program focuses on applying basic engineering principles and technical skills to support engineers and other professionals involved in the development, manufacturing, and testing of aircraft and spacecraft and their systems. Are there any questions on this item? Madam Chairman, the next three items, I understand we have represented is from the respective colleges to present those items.
Agenda, I'm sorry. First item is Calhoun Community College.
Well, good morning. On behalf of Dr. Jimmy Hodges, I want to send his warm greetings. He was unable to attend today, and of course, he sent myself and my colleague, Vice President Cassie Mathis. It takes two of us to represent Dr. Hodges at a board meeting with all of his energy and excitement. So, we're happy to be here. I'm Wes Rechtstrom, Vice President for Academic Affairs. Our item, should I address the instructional site only or?
You can address both items.
Okay, thank you. So, the additional instructional site that we're seeking is the Steam Imagination Center. This is a phenomenal building. It's in downtown Decatur. It's about two blocks east of the Alabama Center for the Arts. The main building is there. It's technically part of the ACA. It's a unique and innovative mix of the arts, the computer sciences, and the applied technologies. Courses and program-related courses that will be there will be in design drafting, in architectural design, additive manufacturing, visual media and communications, video game production. There's state-of-the-art technology equipment there. There's a phenomenal fab lab there as well. And so, that building is going to be an opportunity where we are going to marry those fields in what really is a natural outgrowth of where that kind of industry is headed. And so, it's a phenomenal site, and we look forward to having classes there. Also, we're asking consideration for our Associate in Applied Science in Theater Design and Technology. So, this is a 65-hour AAS degree. It is a natural addition to the things that we do at the Alabama Center for the Arts. We have the staff, the facilities, the equipment in place already. It's a very practical and technology-driven program that leads to immediate employment or to transfer as well to folks who may want to go on to a Bachelor in Fine Arts. We have partners like the Von Ron Center, the Orion Amphitheater, Red Mountain Theater, and even Dollywood, who are interested in, you know, these folks that are workforce. The degree includes, in addition to the gen ed and the arts courses, it includes courses and skills that are things like lighting, makeup, sound and audio engineering, scenery development and design, drawing and color. There will be an OSHA training. There's a course that involves rigging, and if I might, can I have one minute to tell just a brief story about that? So, earlier in the year, we did two productions, one on Barbara of Seville and one was Peter Pan. And what rigging, of course, is, is those actors are flying around up in the air 35, 40 feet. And I remember going over and watching the training, and I wasn't prepared for how scary that looked. And then, you know, we had that opening night production, and I said out loud when the first actor was carried up, I, you know, I said, "Oh, Lord, please don't let anything happen." And my wife kind of elbowed me and said, "You said that out loud." But these are the kinds of things that we're already doing, but this is going to, you know, bring that together in a degree that leads to employment. So, we're very excited about that as well. And I'll certainly entertain any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our workforce, I mean, work session agenda is Reed State Community College.
Good morning. I'm Ginger Glass here, representing Dr. Boykin, who's here for Reed State. I'm the Dean of Instruction there. And our proposal is that we are submitting to be able to offer an Associate in Arts and Associate in Science degree. As you all know, Reed State just received SAC's approval back in June, and we feel that this is needed to benefit our students in the area. One, because we already offer some academic courses, and we want students to decide to further their educations after associate degrees to be able to transfer that coursework and get the additional coursework they need before they transfer to a four-year institution and facilitate some of our other programs that we will be adding to and planning to offer in the future. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Under Workforce Development, we have the fiscal allocation fiscal year 2025 Industries Certification Initiative Funds, Skills USA.
Thank you. And I'd like to just present, go ahead and present all four action items if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So, good morning, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to present these to you today. These action items are requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize the Chancellor to allocate Industry Certification Initiative Funds that support important workforce development initiatives and programs at our colleges. So, the first action item that you'll see is an allocation of $150,000 of ICI funding for the Skills USA Scholarship Program. If you're unfamiliar with the Skills USA Scholarship Program, Skills USA supports students in technical skilled service and health programs through Skills USA, which is a leadership organization that builds personal and workplace technical skills. Skills USA hosts local, state, and national competitions in over 100 skilled areas. And since 2011, ACCS has been partnered with them, offering gold medal winners in career technical competition scholarships, up to $2,000, covering their tuition, books, and fees at any Alabama community college. These scholarships encourage high school students to pursue related college programs, and they help current students complete their studies. So, we are recommending the Board of Trustees allocate 150,000 from Industry Certification Initiative Funds to continue this partnership with Skills USA and support these deserving winners of the competition. Any questions in regards to that? The second action I'd like to cover is an allocation of $7,620,171 of Industry Certification Initiative funding to support grant requests for the Success Coach Initiative, the Career Coordinator Initiative, and Workforce Development Competitive Fund grant proposals. And so, the Success Coach Program expands access to post-secondary education for underserved students through targeted college and career planning. The objectives include early outreach, career awareness, informed decision-making, and personalized support for students in secondary. So, the activities involved with the program focus on engaging with high schools, the academic preparation, education planning, financial aid guidance, and career exploration. And success is measured by guiding at-risk students into career pathways, increasing career and technical education enrollment and placing graduates in post-secondary programs. We track these performance through monthly reports and to see where the colleges are on serving these students in these programs. This was a program that generated off of a three-year pilot program that we had with Enterprise to judge success. And we are continuing to scale this program throughout the state based on the success that we've had with that. So, the Career Coordinator Initiative, that program is intended to strengthen the ACCS students' career readiness by providing personalized guidance, training, and connections to high-wage, high-demand job opportunities. So, as a career coordinator, they would serve as a liaison to local businesses and industry and economic development partners. And they promote college programs, expanding work-based learning opportunities and building employment pipelines. So, the key objective of this initiative is to increase internships, apprenticeships, and job shadowing, and then connecting students with industry mentors, promoting in-demand careers, and expanding campus-wide career services, and enhancing outreach to students, alumni, faculty, staff, and employees. It's really summed up as helping connect our students to jobs once they complete our program and while they are in our programs. Next is the Workforce Development Competitive Funds, which support grant proposals that address Alabama businesses' short- and long-term workforce needs. With the dissolution of the Regional Workforce Council, ACCS formed a Workforce Leadership Council. This year has consisted of 67 industry experts and economic developers that participated from all seven workforce regions and included representatives from six industry sectors to review the grant proposals that were submitted. This process included council members identifying critical workforce challenges through surveys and through direct feedback, which informed requests for proposals that went out to the colleges. The colleges then submitted their applications through our workforce grant portal. And then, the colleges presented the proposals to the Workforce Council, who scored and recommended projects for funding. We had a committee at ACCS that utilized these recommendations and their direct feedback to develop the funding proposals that you see today. So, we included a full list of all the grant awards from all the workforce funding sources as a reference as well. Any questions in regards to those? The next action item is an allocation of $1 million of ICI funding for the existing industry training program. The existing industry training program, what we call EITP, you'll hear that acronym used a lot. That program helps Alabama employers cover costs for skills upgrade training for full-time permanent employees. The eligible training includes job-specific skills, safety, technical and computer skills, new technologies, equipment operation, process changes, and soft skills such as leadership and communication. Employers provide a dollar-for-dollar in-kind match, which may include wages, benefits, equipment, materials, curriculum, travel, and lodging, et cetera. And then, applications are accepted year-round. The past few years, we've seen and experienced an increased need for incumbent worker training. And we see this as where ACCS can make a huge impact to business retention and expansion across the state, driving economic development through this program. This is a significant increase over last year, just because we have seen such a positive impact that it's made on businesses and the workers who are able to see the benefits of wages and increased skills through that program. So, we recommend the Board of Trustees authorize the Chancellor to award up to $1 million. And the grants will be capped at 15,000 per training project with an annual limit of $60,000 for each company.
Barry, how much did we actually use of that money last year for the EITP?
We used all of it, and we had a backlog. We've got companies waiting for these funds to be approved to take advantage of it. Because we had, y'all had approved and increased it 600,000 from 300,000. We went through that pretty rapidly, and now we've got backlog. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
And we've got one last one. And this is, we are recommending that the Board of Trustees authorize the Chancellor to distribute $250,000 of ICI funds from the current legislative appropriation and any unused funds from past grant awards to support grants that address ongoing critical workforce development training needs that are discovered throughout the year. So, this action item is purposed to support community colleges in addressing urgent and high-priority workforce needs within their service areas. As you know, these come up, critical needs come up throughout the year. And we would like a process to be able to address critical needs as they occur and be able to respond rapidly to those. This would allow us to do that. We have set up a process that would allow them to submit a pre-application. We can look and see what the need, it is, you know, validate it is a critical need, validate the impact, and then invite the college at that point, after determining that it is a critical need and will have a great impact, invite them to submit a full application for those funds, in which we will have a committee here to review those and then make a decision for a final award for those. Any questions in regards to that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe the last items on our agenda are all facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Good morning, board members and Chancellor Baker. We have five items to share with you this morning. The first one is going to take us to coastal Alabama. Specifically, board members, as we look at this, at the college system there, or the community college at Baymanet, there's a project known as the Fort Cruz renovation. We've included in there the location for you and its proximity to the existing baseball field. And as you look at the building, it really is a nice gathering area that the college enjoys for events and so forth. Due to its age, the college has elected to go in there and just modernize and clean up the building and do a good refresh to it. So, as we move this project forward, we do expect that we'll have bids coming back to us later on this month and then bringing it back for board action in the September board meeting. The project itself, as we go through the renovation, will get started as we go into the third quarter of this year. Depending on the lead times, I do expect that this project will be completed sometime going into the summer. And clearly, we'll punch it out as we go into the fourth quarter of next year. Any questions about this project? The next project, board members, is at Shelton. Specifically, we have two from Shelton for us to go over today. This first one takes us to the Fred Campus, and this is the phase that we've been really looking forward to now for a while, where we now begin to address the hardscape and the landscape to the campus. Fred, we've been busy the last couple of years modernizing all of those buildings that you see at that campus. Now, we're moving into dealing with the pedestrian aspect of this and vehicles, lighting, circulation, and so forth. And so, in this particular drawing, with the exception of Building A on here, that is a future placement holder. It does not exist. But other than what you see here, between Buildings 100 and 700, and then you go to the back where we have all of those CTE programs, you can see identified letter D, which is going to be the transformation of that area into green space. And so, we're going to be pushing the vehicles and so forth out to the perimeter and establishing a loop around the campus and then creating that pedestrian aspect. This is a feature that we're beginning to introduce to a number of our colleges. And this one here will certainly enhance the experience for. this one here will certainly enhance the experience for the students. We do expect that we'll have bids coming back to us at the end of the month and then for the board to take action at the September board meeting. And this work will conclude as we go into the summer of next year. And then, once this work is completed, it really caps off what we've been trying to do there for the last two to three years at that Fred Campus. It really is going to pop and be a very, very nice addition and enhancement for the community. Also at Shelton, we go over to the Martin Campus and specifically, we're looking at that softball field at the campus there and changing it out from natural grass to an artificial grass field. That artificial surface will also be the infield as well. This is a trend that has swept in the nation at the collegiate level at all divisions. And so as we take a look at the existing campus or the existing facility, we've just recently completed the enhancements with bleachers and lockers and so forth and an indoor practice facility where we will now add this artificial grass to the program. This one is going to move quickly, board members, is that as we take a look at the season that is rapidly approaching, we'll have bids coming in at the end of this month. We'll release the contractor after we have the board's approval in September and this work is slated to be completed before Christmas and they'll be able to use it for the season as they come back after the Christmas break. Any questions about the change out of the natural grass field to an artificial surface for the softball program? At Bevel, board members, we have here the purchase of the Nittle property that we're introducing. Board members, this is an 11 and 1/2 acre site that is adjacent to the existing Bevel and Alabama Power HVAC Training Center. We're already familiar with the work that we're doing at the existing facility there. This one here is going to be a nice enhancement for the college in responding to the growing needs for workforce training that are occurring there at Walker County. The building is almost a twin to what exists in the building that we have already for Bevel as a shared project with the Alabama Power. As we move this purchase forward, we're just completing our due diligence and as we do so, right now we're slated to close on this as we go into September and finalize that deal. We'll bring this back for the board to give final vote in September and then we'll go ahead and we'll close on that transaction. Any questions about the Jasper Campus and the purchase of the Nittle property? And then the last one we have here, board members, is for Sneed. This is introducing the renovation of their Performing Arts Center known as the Bevel Center. And it's not only the renovation, but we've also looked at the addition of a black box theater. This is one of those rarities that the college has expressed and the community a desire and interest in the addition of this aspect to their program. This is our existing Bevel Center as it's situated on the campus just north of the ball fields. And this is the existing building as it sits right now. It's a beautiful theater, but it is in a state of deterioration due to HVAC issues or conditioning issues of the space. So we're addressing those concerns and then as we address the concerns, the addition of the black box as a consideration is located there in both of these models as we phase this work in, in the upper left-hand corner. We designed this so that we can take a look at this to see if we can fit it in the budget. It will be treated as an alternate bid, but we're optimistic with some of the responses we're seeing to some of the construction, if not most of our projects, where a lot of them are coming under cost estimates by as much as 20 to 30 percent. So we're optimistic in terms of what we'll see with this bid as those results come back to us. And this is some of the enhancements that will improve the aesthetics of that building and make it very modern and contemporary for the college. Our projections right now are to take bids on the 28th of this month and then board members bring those results back to you in the September board meeting for approval. We do expect that we'll start construction sometime in the October timeframe and then as we move forward, it'll be 2027 before we get and achieve substantial completion and then final completion the month thereafter. Board members, any questions about the Performing Arts Center renovation and the consideration of a black box theater addition for this project? Board members, thank you.
I believe that's all we have on our work session agenda. I want to echo what the Chancellor said to all, Mr. O'Brien, to you and your staff, to all presidents and your staff and the ACCS employees. I do realize a lot of work goes into this and I'm sorry, I butchered it so bad today, but I do want to truly thank you all for your hard work and dedication to our mission here at the ACCS. We stand adjourned.